Good evening again, everyone. Thank you to Montgomery Township School District, Tuesday, August 27, 2023, open time of the year. The time is 7:47 PM. And thank you all for your attendance and taking the time to do your tasks. But everyone, for secretary, did you permit to go both these?
Yes. Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Ms. Dowlin.
Here.
Ms. Eilak. Ms. Frank O'Hern. Ms. Harris. Ms. Pina. Mr. Todd.
Here.
Ms. Recardon. Dr. Spencer Wallace.
Presenting the new students.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please be seated. With the absence of our Montgomery High School student representative at this time, next on our agenda will be our superintendent's report and our presentation. Superintendent McGowan.
Good evening, everyone. While students haven't returned to school yet, they have started coming back to school. At the high school in UMS, our student athletes have begun preseason training, and members of our MHS marching band are back for the fall season and hard at work. If you have nothing to do, you should come by this, and the music is spectacular. We are excited to bring full day kindergarten to the district for our students for the first time ever, as well as the opening of our early childhood center for our preschool students. District administrators welcomed our new staff last week here in New Staff Academy, actually, well, it's at the academy school that we're in the district. Just some upcoming events on Thursday. We're going to have our second annual kickoff to fall sport at MHS. This is a time for our students, athletic teams, cheerleaders, dance team, and MHS marching bands to be celebrated by our community and each other. We invite everyone to join us for food trucks, performances by our cheerleaders, dance team, and marching band, and an evening of fun and family competition as we kick off another exciting year. New families to Montgomery Township School District, upper middle school will be welcomed during the new families from 11 to 12:30. Student orientation is gone through 2:30 on August 29. Councilors and student council members will be on hand to help the seventh graders familiarize themselves with the building, their schedules, and their lockers. The open houses are scheduled for Tuesday, September 5. Details can be found on the Village homepage and in the Village Family Bluebird, which will be sent home this week. The Bluebird also includes other information to get families ready for the school year. Please check the website for information on all the school's open houses and all the upcoming events. Friday night lights are back, and our MHS football team opens their season Friday, August 25th, at 7:00 PM against Robbinsville. We're excited to see our stands packed by our community once again this season. The kids are waiting for our schedules for all students, district wide, will be released this Friday, August 25th, at 5:00 PM. Parents, please remember to log into Genesis Parent Access Friday, 25th, and complete all the required forms to ensure that you have access to your child's schedule. I would now like to invite our Director of Curriculum Instruction Staff Development, Ms. Fiona Borland, and our Montgomery High School principal, I think she'll follow her, Mrs. Pino Bebe, to present on our New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment results from the Spring 2023 Administration.
Well, she's coming. I was going to say, I can feel the whole thing, and that's okay. Ms. Borland.
I did not, I did not leave you. Sorry, I was needed in the back.
You do play jokes on each other.
Hi, good evening. I am Fiona Borland, Director of Curriculum Instruction Staff Development, here tonight, filling in for our Director of Data to present on the 2023 New Jersey Graduation Proficiency Assessment. So a couple things. What is that? So the NJGPA is a measure that assesses our students readiness for graduation in both English Language Arts and Mathematics. Our ELA component is aligned with the Grade 10 New Jersey Student Learning Standards, and the math component is aligned with our Algebra I and Geometry course. That is not ours, it is the state of New Jersey standards. In addition to serving as a graduation requirement, it also helps us review curriculum. It lets us see if the curriculum is doing what it needs to do to help our students become proficient in all the skills and content needed to be graduation-ready. This is administered to 11th graders, and it is administered in the spring or the early spring, March of 2023. The NJGPA only has two performance levels. This is different than the NJSLA, which has five performance levels. NJGPA is simply reported as graduation-ready or not yet graduation-ready. So a couple of things that we need to know is that on May 3, 2023, the New Jersey State Board adopted a 725 as the proficiency cut for both ELA and the math component of the New Jersey Graduation Performances Proficiency Assessment. And students who do not meet that minimum score have a couple of different opportunities to be able to graduate, to be able to meet the requirement for graduation. So the first pathway is they will have the opportunity to retake the test. So students who did not yet reach a level of graduation-ready, they can retake in the fall, and they can demonstrate proficiency. There are also a second pathway in which they can meet the minimum score in both math and LA, and LA, on substitute competency tests. So the state of New Jersey gives us a collection of tests that they say will measure the exact same or measure similar content, and they will therefore take those as a secondary pathway. And the third pathway is that we are able to put together our student portfolio and appeal for ELA and do the same thing to demonstrate our students have indeed achieved graduation readiness by the spring of their senior year. Now, a couple of things about data. So when we're reporting data, the intent is to protect the student privacy, and so the state develops a set of procedures that systematically prevent members of the public from asserting any single student's identity. The guidelines are provided to us by the federal government, and that in reporting of the assessment results, suppression of numbers will occur in categories where the counts are low, making it otherwise impossible to infer the results of an individual student. We're always seeking to protect student privacy. The Every Student Succeeds Act states that states must select a minimum number and equals a necessary number for a subgroup to be allowed to be recorded publicly in the system, and the New Jersey Department of Education maintains that number as 10 as its minimum. So if there is a subgroup that is not presented tonight, it is because that subgroup has less than 10 individuals in it and therefore cannot be included in the data, has to be suppressed. Okay. So just first, we're just going to do overall ELA results for total student population. What you see in the gold is the district on all of the slides. The gold is the district, and the green will be the state. So we've got 95% of our students are graduation-ready in ELA, and 5% of our students are still working on being graduation-ready. In our mathematics, we have 92, 90, I'm sorry. I was going to go with, I couldn't tell if it was 92 or 93 without my blossom on. So 92.7 with our students in ready for graduation, and 7.3%, and you can see the difference in the state, where we have 55 and 45. So again, Montgomery, as traditionally does, is far outperforming the state in these areas. So then we can do some demographic data for you. So we'll start with gender. We've got our male and female subgroups, and these are the subgroups as reported by the state. So we've got 97% of our female students are graduation-ready, and 93.2 of our male students are also graduation-ready. In NJGPA for math, we've got 94.3 of our female students are graduation-ready, and 91.3 of our students, our male students, are graduation-ready. When we go into race, you'll see that 81% of our Hispanic Latino students are graduation-ready, 98% of our Asian students are graduation-ready, and 94.8% of our white students are graduation-ready. And this is in ELA.
And just to be clear, so the N size for the State Department of Education is 10. I went back through the data, and for our black students, which we do track internally, as we do with all of our subgroups, we only had nine students take the test, so we can't publicly report that data.
And so looking at the same subgroups in mathematics, you have 75% of our Hispanic Latino students are graduation-ready, 97.5% of our Asian students, and 89.6% of our white students graduation-ready in mathematics. When we look at our students with disabilities, we've got 68.9% of our students are graduation-ready in ELA, and in mathematics, we've got 55.6% of our students are graduation-ready. So just things, some things to know overall about this performance. As I mentioned already, Montgomery students drastically outperformed the state in both English Language Arts and Mathematics, and over 90% of our students are demonstrating graduation readiness in both Language Arts and Mathematics. So as you know, or you may know from other reports that we've presented over the years, New Jersey has a tiered system of support. Tier one are the kind of supports that every single student can benefit from. They are the kind of supports that should exist in every classroom so that teachers are best able to differentiate and meet the needs of as many students as possible within the classroom setting that they are in. Tier two is a targeted assessment when students are grouped into small targeted groups based on skills that need specific interventions. And then tier three is when we really need to apply intensive interventions in order, often a different effort, a different curricular resource, something that really helps reframe the curriculum in a way that students can learn differently in order to master the skills that are necessary. So some things that you, that we, you know, I just want you to know about how we provide interventions for our students. Our students are regularly monitored and analyzed. Our student data is regularly monitored and analyzed, analyzed and discussed by staff. Often, you will hear the phrase PLCs or CLTs. That is professional learning communities or collaborative learning teams. This is when our teachers gather to look at data and really ask, you know, how did our students just do on the last assessment? Whether it is a normed assessment, like a STAR 360, or a local assessment to really make sure our students are moving forward in mastery of the skills. Data is continuously used to determine the efficacy of our instructional practices. So at the end of a unit, when teachers are analyzing their data, they look at each other and say, how, you know, when you really have students who have succeeded and excelled well, what best practices do we use? What's helping our students do the best in this content area? Content area supervisors work closely with their teachers in identifying and clearly identifying the standards and skills and concepts that are not yet grasped by their students. And we do have, we do have the ability to break down assessments into smaller chunks to know what standards and what content and skills we are assessing. So last year, we purchased a district assessment, STAR 360. It is a nationally-normed digital adaptive assessment that our students in grades 2 through 10 take in LA, and it is used in groups of grades 1 through 8 in mathematics. It is aligned with the NJSLS and the NJSLA. It can be correlated to help predict success, so we can monitor over the fall, winter, and spring to track growth and mastery of our students and how they are mastering the standards as the year goes by and goes through. It helps us identify if students need any supplemental instruction, and it really also increases real-time and classroom instruction differentiation by being able to identify where students are in real time in the classroom. In our high school, we also have a Mathematics and Literacy Lab course. This is a course in which students are supported with more specific targeted skills. Again, very data-driven. Where is an area of weakness or where is an area of the curriculum they have not yet mastered? And the smaller group intensive and extra instructional practice allows us to really help close the gaps. These are very successful programs. We also have after-school clinics for our students, and we also offer, we also offer an achieve program that provides after-school help and study hall help as well. So we are very purposeful about identifying students who are in need and making sure that we're able to close those instructional gaps. Just another representation of when our first goal is always going to be the universal supports for all students. This might be, you know, presenting something differently, chunking an assignment, providing extended time, giving text at various reading levels on the same content, really helping students be able to master the skills and content in a myriad of ways. Universal Design for Learning talks about multiple means of representation. How can I represent the same content so my visual, kinesthetic, and auditory learner can all master the skills differently? And we really work on targeting that. When a student is still demonstrating struggle, we might go to our, we might take that student to the Intervention and Referral Services Team and really turn around and get some recommendations about what could happen in the classroom. And then we also might use that to group our students more strategically and to be able to provide them extra support. And if necessary, then we will go on to refer on the evaluation to make sure all students get what they need. At this time, I just want to have Principal Pino share some of our data compared to last year.
So what I'm going to share with you tonight, also, good evening, everybody. I hope you're all enjoying the milder summer weather these last days. I always call August the Sunday of summer for all of us. But I will say, I'm ready to return my own children back to their children's home. So what I, what I want to do is look at some comp data, and this is what we're going to be presenting to our staff on the first or the fifth, depending on which PD day it falls. Because really, what you have to do is understand where this is in context, and is what you're doing really impacting students from year to year? So what I have for you is a comp of the 21-22 GPA data to 22-23. And what you're going to see is that we've had significant growth in all of our areas. So the yellow is 21-22, the green is 22-23, and you can see in ELA specifically, we went up from 72.8, 73% to 95% proficient. So that would be considered some really significant growth from us. We also went up in math from almost 90% to 92.7. That's really important because last year, we were number one of all public schools in the state for math. So we're eagerly awaiting. I actually just checked before coming in tonight for that data that's presented from all the other districts within the state as well to see what we felt this year. Our students with disabilities, you can see again, significant growth from 14% to 68 in ELA, almost 39% to about 55.6% in math. Also taking into consideration, these are significantly smaller subgroups of the population. For our students that identified as white, we went from 53.2 in ELA to almost 95%. 81.6 to almost 90% in math. For our Asian subgroup, ELA 90 to 98. Math, a marginal decrease of less than 1%. Our Hispanic students, up again from 38 to almost 82, and 52 to almost 76. And again, that's graduation-ready. So one of the questions that we want to ask ourselves as educators is, how did we get there? How did we do that? It wasn't by accident. So nobody comes in and just accidentally teaches skills, standards, and all the things that we want our students to know. These are all very targeted things that we do to make sure that we're getting our students to this level of proficiency where they're then able to perform on assessments and in any area really that they want to perform. I want to emphasize before we go into this that it is extremely important for us and for our students to recognize they are more than a test score. So we report out on this because we do use it as a measure of where our kids are and are they learning and are they growing? But this does not define our students for us. It's just one snippet of who each of them are. So we looked at, as Fiona mentioned, targeted standards and skills-based remediation clinics in both ELA and math. That we were able to do because we had the ESAR funding and also the vision of Fiona when it came to curriculum and instruction. So we were able to look specifically at the students that, you know, you have these students that teeter on the cusp of ready, and you're looking at their ability to attain the standards and the specific skills that are needed in order to get towards that proficiency level that's needed to graduate. And you have to really make sure that you target and push. And we do that for all of our students, but specifically, when you've got kids that are hanging on that cliff, you want to make sure that you keep them on the right side. We have curricular enhancements by targeted standards, so just looking at comprehensive literacy instruction. And this isn't just in our ELA classrooms. This is in every area. So from our electives to our science classes, math, social studies, every area. Individual student score analysis is big for us, and looking at focus remediation by student. So you can look at numbers as a whole, like what I've given you today, but really, you have to get granular when you look at each individual student to figure out what is needed. Shifting the culture for our students and our building is important. So going back to what I'm saying, our students are more than a test score, whether it's a summative assessment in a course, a state-mandated assessment for graduations such as this and SAT, whatever it may be, that's just one marker in history of how they are doing in that moment, on that day. So it's looking at, you know, how are we communicating what we use assessments for in the classrooms and non-tested areas, in our counseling supports and our SEL supports? It's empowering students to recognize that this isn't important because you want to get a score and have the better score than the kid sitting next to you, but it's really about demonstrating your mastery of content and knowledge. I saw a great little thing on social media the other day that said, wow, I really hope that the doctor that's sitting next to me didn't cheat wherever they are because I don't want to be in that operating room. So we don't want to get our kids hungry to just get that next point, that next point, that next point, and do anything that they can to get there. It's really about that intrinsic motivation to show us what they are capable of and be proud of it. We have amazing, amazing kids. We're big on, we say, don't sweat the test, but it's important to show what you know. We do have a little bit of fun with that. We all wear sweatpants on that day, myself included. I've gotten progressively nicer sweatpants as time has gone on. And Montgomery sweatpants, because I don't, I don't know that the sweatpants that I wore to paint were what I really meant by that. We've spent a lot of time normalizing discussions around test stress and anxiety. This is a big and important thing for our students, and it's not just when it comes to state standardized assessments. It's anytime that they are tested. So we took, you'll remember going back, May was a big deal for us. May is always known nationally as Mental Health Month, Mental Health Awareness Month. Specifically in our mathematics classroom, you know, every curricular area shows a different piece that they were going to kind of spearhead. In our math classrooms, they specifically spent a large amount of time looking at test stress and anxiety and what do we need in order to succeed? That's something that just doesn't happen during the month of May. That's all year long. And it's important that kids know what exactly are they doing on that test and what does it measure? You can't just go in blind and say, I'm taking this assessment, but I'm unsure of what they're asking me to give and expect to be measured at a level of proficiency. You have to understand what it is that you're doing, what it is that you're taking, and why. So there's a lot of student understanding of rubrics, refining every student's ability to self-assess and also help their peers to assess. And I can't, I can't emphasize enough how critical our staff is in every aspect of this. So our staff give and give, they pour into our students, they find the kids that need a little bit more, whether it be in a specific standard, a specific skill, or perhaps even the mental aspect of testing, and they work with those kids. So I always say, you know, I stole this from Joship. Every kid is one caring adult away from being a success story. And it's really important that we make sure that each and every one of us is giving the kids the message that they need in order to succeed. Once an adult looks at a kid and gives the message of you can't or you won't, it's really hard to undo that. You can have 10 very positive adults, one adult that doesn't believe in a kid, and that's the difference between turning left or right. So these are clearly not in any order of importance. Each one is important, but I would say the human element is probably the most. Do we have any questions? Do I dare to ask you that kind of question?
Yes, so thank you for the presentation. It's really exciting, actually, to see the improvements among high school student performance. So Ms. Borland, you mentioned that the student scores and the not ready for graduation status, that they retake the test. When does that occur? October. October. And the test is administered in the spring?
The test is administered, administered to 11th graders in the spring. Students who are not yet graduation-ready will have a second opportunity. If they, if they do not have another data point that already demonstrates that they are graduation-ready and potentially just had an off day or something about that test didn't really work for them, they will have an opportunity to take it again in October.
I will let you know that a large portion of our students that came up as not graduation-ready did meet an alternate pathway. So that would be an SAT, a PSAT. The ASVAP is also an alternate pathway, but our students don't have.
The state has kept those measures in place?
Yes.
Even with the addition of this assessment? Okay, great. So thank you for providing specificity as to remain to the interventions for all our students. So could you please talk to us a little bit about the interventions you provide for our students with a disability? Of course, not for those who are determined to sit for an alternate assessment. What type of assessments do you provide for them? Because when looking at the data, they were like the lowest performing, we realize what those impediments and parameters are that can impede achievement. But I'd like to hear what those interventions are.
Sure. So one of the, one of the reasons that we said at the beginning, I think it was the second or third slide that says, you know, why do we take these kind of tests? Well, one of the things that it does is it can help evaluate our curriculum. And so when we see that a particular class or student, student population is not being as successful as we like, we go back and say like, okay, so do they need a different resource, right? So as I said, with Universal Design for Learning, you're looking at multiple means of representation, and another concept would be like multiple means of expression. Can I give students a different way to demonstrate and show me what they know? So I might go back and say, okay, even though that this is our core curriculum, in our replacement class, I'm going to use this intervention resource and be able to make sure that that meets those students' needs.
So thank you for that. So with that premise, with Universal Design for Learning, and we know we have an expectation that teachers are able to differentiate their instruction, are our teachers actually differentiating the assessments that they provide for students?
So I want to be cautious on that. So there's a lot of value to, right, there's a lot of value to common assessments. And we're also talking about two different subgroups, right? So when you're talking about the subgroup population, students with disabilities, this is a population of students that have already received an individual education plan. And that's why it's really difficult to just speak to, this is the intervention, because based on the specific needs of the legal document, that teacher is going to do something that is very specific for that student. Additionally, students with IEPs have different educational goals. So they might, it is likely that they will not have the same assessment as a student in the general education class because their goals and their educational goals may have been altered. So with that particular population, absolutely. You could see, you would likely see different assessments.
And what about with our?
And with our, with our regular, with our Gen Ed population, we have common assessments for each unit. We have our normed assessment, which is the STAR 360. But when it comes to classroom projects, classroom assignments, exit tickets, over the course of a unit, you're going to see a variety of different styles and opportunities for a student to show what they learned.
I just want to add a small piece. So the addition of STAR 360 this year was significant for us. So at the high school level, to have a nationally-normed test for our ninth and 10th grade students where they can, you know, when we look at ELA, it's your ability to, one, write analytically, but also read critically. So to be able to measure your ability to read critically and have multiple opportunities to measure growth over the course of a year is something that is extremely important to all of us as educators. So it's not just important, I was an English teacher. Yes, it's important to me. But it's also important that in social studies, we're addressing, you know, whatever specific standard that student may be a little bit less proficient on, and so on and so forth. So we're able to now take that data and triangulate it with all our other data points to see where we are doing well, where we need to provide a little more emphasis. And those interventions could happen as simply as small group instruction in the classroom around a specific skill or need, or something as broad as attending one of our after-school sessions for that.
And President Spencer Wallace, I want to give a little bit of nuance here to the common assessments in our classrooms. So one of the, the positive side, there's two positive impacts of a common assessment across all English 10, all IPELs 9. What you want teachers to be able to do is, one, have equity in education, right? So I need to make sure that if Heather and I are both teaching USS 31, that Heather's test is not radically different than my test for the end of Unit 1 and the end of Unit 2. Because the minute that we start doing those kind of great differences, I start, I start, I easily can question the equitable education in the classroom. So by having those common outcomes, and that's the teach by, you know, So by having those common outcomes, and that's the teach by, you know, backwards by design, here's what I need to get my students to understand, I work backwards and I teach to that. It's really important that those assessments are common. It also allows you to start looking at data from a level of what the core principle of a collaborative learning team is that you and I and Mary and Michelle can all sit around and we have the knowledge that we need to help our students be successful. So there's a lot of value in local common assessments, and we have them. And we, that is a common practice in Montgomery. The flip side of that is allowing and looking for, well, is there something about this student that is unable to demonstrate their mastery? And then that really comes to the other areas of the gradebook. And that's probably where I might be looking to you to say, no single assessment can exceed X amount of percent. There we go. So that's where we start really looking at gradebook design and where else can our students demonstrate their mastery?
But I just want to, I'm going to go backwards on what you said for a minute.
You shouldn't want us to spend extra time. We should worry about this.
You know, education, like every industry, has its buzzwords, but this is where data-driven instruction is more than just a buzzword. So we really do spend an extensive amount of time making sure that we drill down. And when we look at how our students are doing on these common assessments, which are standards line, and we have a student that is struggling, you have a group of teachers working to figure out how to triage it differently to make sure that we do move our student in a growth direction. So it's not just necessarily the teacher in the classroom, but you have a whole collaborative learning team that's looking at that and saying, did we try this? Did we look at this? Do we need to assess this differently? Do we need to take a different approach? How do we get them to the point of proficiency? And I'll be very honest with you, it's not about reaching proficiency, it's about pushing beyond proficiency. So never do we want to settle for proficiency. We want to always push beyond and make sure that that is not a stopping mark, but just a measurement stick.
So if you go back to the tiered systems of support slide. So I think when New Jersey required this statewide, I think a couple of years ago, it's pretty consistent, right, with the research-based, you know, RTI, response to intervention.
Absolutely.
Have there been any internal changes with our intervention supports and how we identify them?
Over which period of time?
This past school year.
Okay. I will tell you, the greatest consistency in education is that we are ever changing. So I always like to say, the only thing that's consistent is that we are inconsistent in doing the exact same thing every year. But, you know, our, our supports have, you know, they evolve always. So we saw, you know.
I was going to jump in with data.
You can jump in with data.
So I think that.
I'll do that.
Last year, the, you know, and I believe it was on, it's already been purchased. I think it was on the June agenda. The investment and purchase in the Renaissance software is not a small one, right? And so one of the reasons that we did that is that we really wanted to make sure that there was a consistent data point that could be tracked over multiple years. We've all, this is going into year two, we've had it for one year. But across all grade levels and multiple points in the year. The other thing that I really love about STAR, the STAR platform, is one of the reasons we selected it is because the average student takes less than 30 minutes to complete it. You can take longer, it's an adaptive test, it's going to respond based on the student's answer before. The reason I'm bringing all that up is that this was a year in which we added the early birds dyslexia screening software for our K1, and we added the STAR data three, no less than three times a year for all students and five times a year for some of our students in our academic support and intervention programs. So I, we're, we're always looking at, as Mr. Corey Delgado takes the helm of his new job, I'm sure he's going to be looking for always helping the change become consistent. But at the same time, I really do feel like our decisions for tiered interventions are becoming more solidified in a data-driven decision, not just how do I think this child is doing? And then there's a purchase on the agenda tonight called Blink It. I'm just going to go forward, keep going for a moment. That's our data house, our data warehouse. That lets me like look up, like, is there consistency between how a child is doing in STAR and how a child did on the NJSLA and how that child did on their report card? And am I seeing the whole picture of that kid? And that's, that's really, that is to me been our biggest change this year is that we've had, we've become a data-rich district with real-time data.
So I'm just going to add a couple of things to that. That is significant.
That's all the smoke.
Yeah, it's, well, it's significant because when we used to data mine before, it was days and weeks of picking through and hand-selecting data and recording it in a separate sheet. So now with a couple of clicks, I can triangulate attendance, multiple data points over multiple years, look at a student's growth profile as well as where they are in attaining specific skills and standards. So, you know, any time that we can recoup time, that we can really focus on our kids is going to be significant. I also need to add in that, you know, the continued revision of curriculum is significant. So the research has always shown that when you meet a student at their interest level, you can push them beyond their actual academic place where, their level where they are, and you can push them to greater heights. So making sure that we listen to our students, make sure that we stay culturally relevant, make sure that we're providing opportunities for our students to meaningfully engage and meaningfully assess themselves and each other. Those are all things that go into making sure that they are able to attain and push past measures of proficiency.
Thank you, ladies. And then my final question is around a different content area. So thank you for speaking to assessments, you know, how our approach is, you know, grounded in equity, the backwards design, and continuous review of real-time standardized data. I think that's all great. So when you were speaking, it reminded me of an email that the board received over the summer about the content area of biology. And what stood out to me was that there were multiple parents, right, expressing concern about their children's performance in that class and specifically how there was a, a significant variance, if you will, in their, you know, homework, ability to show in other areas their grasp of the content and their unit assessments or what have you in that class. So I heard you say, Principal Pinot-Bey, that it's important for kids to know what they're being assessed on and to be prepared. And when we're looking at and when we're talking about that human element, you know, putting some integrity and responsibility, you know, with the student, you know, but also the teacher, and really respecting and honoring that exchange, right? And that growth and, you know, learning process. So if you can just speak to us a little bit about how, what our performance points are showing, although in a standardized way with ELA and math, and talk a little bit about that biology performance.
Okay. I'm not sure I'm supposed to address specific emails from the podium, but I will speak to it.
Just broadly, please, thank you.
I'd like to first start by pointing out that unique to our course of study at Montgomery High School, we have no prerequisites in our science courses. So this is significant when you bring up what we're talking about because that means that whereas we collect measures to make sure we can predict student success in the other areas, so I can say that a student that takes Algebra II and receives X grade will experience success if they continue along their trajectory when they get to pre-calculus. A student who falls below that because of the longitudinal data that we've collected over the years is likely to not meet with success and therefore not learn the material. Math and some of our other areas are, I kind of look at them as a spiral in education. You need the precursor skill to build to the next skill. So I can't go to calculus if I did not master Algebra II, if I did not master Algebra I. Geometry is in the middle. I'm not going to pretend to explain, to understand that. That's for our math supervisor. Clearly, I was an English teacher. Science is a little bit different in that regard. So we go IPELS, which is our general science course. Then we have chemistry, then we have biology. Your success in chemistry doesn't necessarily predict your success in biology. However, we do have multiple levels of each course. So it's often common that a student will say that. It's often common that a student might say, you know, chemistry was a little bit more difficult for me. I'm not really great at math. So chemical equations, that was hard for me to understand. I'm a lot better when it comes to these skills over here. I'm going to predict that I'm going to do well in biology. But that doesn't always correlate either. So we do our best to make sure that we counsel our students to take the courses that we feel are most appropriate. But this is the area that we really have removed any sense of, for lack of a better word, gatekeeping to allow our students to challenge themselves as a student. A lot of times, our students don't always select a course that will give them the grade they expect. So we have to ask ourselves, what do I consider to be a good grade? And what does that look like for me as an individual versus Fiona as an individual versus Marty as an individual? So I don't know that we can just compare like to like. What I can tell you is that whether it is biology, Algebra II, English 9, we all, myself included, spend a lot of time data mining, looking at our courses, looking at biology students as a whole and where do they fall in terms of their course mastery, their grades? And we make sure that we have that normal bell distribution. So that way, we do make sure that our students are falling along that bell curve as we would expect them to. So there's a lot to unpack there. I think I addressed it a little, but that's it.
Great, thank you. I know we have more discussions about this. And our assessment curriculum structure committee, yes, for the cause?
Question here, I was, I was listening here, I didn't hear an answer to this. The 21, 22 ELA, ready for graduation, jumped by 20%. To what do we think that?
A couple of things. So if I'm being brutally honest with you, I don't know how much our students really read during COVID. So, you know, I always say that there's a lot of muscle memory that goes to reading and making sure that we are able to do that complex analysis, that we have that instruction there. So there's that variable that comes into play. Slight change in the cut score, but that's also in response to the level of difficulty that the test provided. So that's not really an accurate measure. We targeted our instruction differently. So we looked at that and said, you know, we've got to look at a couple of things and what are we doing? And there also was the addition of literacy support in our social studies and our history courses. So that way, we were tag-teaming that, both with literacy and writing in both areas, and making sure that we're providing students with multiple measures of authentic means to respond to prompts. So that critical analysis doesn't always have to happen in the traditional way where I'm going to give you a prompt and you're going to respond, or I'm going to give you a passage and you're going to speak about it. It looks like a lot of different things and making sure that we give that opportunity for expression in a variety of means. So that way, when you do come down to answering that multiple choice or given that written response, you've had the ability to understand. So one of my favorite that we master incredibly is secreted score discussions, which are often student-led and probably more rigorous than anything I ever experienced when I was in high school. It's a little intimidating to watch. But when students are able to have that level of discourse, it then translates later to their ability to learn.
We also, you know, she knows it to me, it's my turn. You know, we have a lot of jargon and one of the jargon, one of the, a label is academic stamina. And when, you know, Heather Pinot says that our students didn't spend, there were a proportion of our students who may not have spent as much time reading on their own during the pandemic school years that they do in school. I think that universally, one of the places that we saw many of our students struggle returning in the fall of 2021, yeah, returning in the fall of 2021, was in the area of academic stamina. And it, it really took months, and I'm, I'm watching another educator shake their head. We have two other educators shake their head and just not looking around the table for everybody else. Yeah, there we go. Academic stamina was just one of those things to come back in and attend to the action of like grappling and thinking and doing. And that, there was a gap. And that gap needed to be closed. And in the second year of students being back in the building, and where I said I'm going to steal your thunder, is that I think that one of the things I know I'm ridiculously proud of as a school district, and it's not by my leadership. I'm the data girl and the curriculum girl. But we have incredible leaders that pay incredible attention to the social emotional needs of our students and helping them readjust to being the incredible academic students that we want them to be. So I hope that that, not I hope, I'm sure that that's part of the job.
Absolutely. So, so given that, is there something that we, we learned to start the next, whatever it is? You know, I think there's a big one.
Marty, they're better not to do that next, that outdoor in my tent.
I don't think that's the way around.
Yes. And what I'm also going to couch this with is recognizing that if you look at us from 21, 22 in comparison with the state and other districts in the state, they were here, we were here. So I just want to make that clear as well. So we experienced significant growth. We were still blowing everybody else out of the water. So with that being said, absolutely, you know, there are ways we have learned to do things better. Look at the last 10 years of education and the way we teach, the way we think, the way we all experience our own learning now. It's not as simple as saying, take home this book and read it. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of other elements that go into that. Our ability to harness technology differently now, I would say was one of the key takeaways of that time. That was one of the things, there were a lot of things that I don't ever want to see again. Just going to be honest. But there were some gifts that we got from that that pushed us forward way quicker than we would have ever got there. So that I am grateful for and our, our students' ability to, the way they interact now and the way they're able to go add their information and materials, really because they were left alone by themselves and had no choice. There's been a significant change in that, where we're now able to meet our students where they are and we miss that.
Thank you. Do board members have any further questions for our presenters this evening?
Patrick?
Here's to, thank you, Principal Gold, Pinot-Bey, and Ms. Boylan for your outstanding presentation. Thank you for the debate.
And that concludes the superintendent report.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. So we've reached the point of our agenda. Our action agenda items, public comment, our first of the evening. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input by the public. Members of the public are granted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, however, please state your name and address and write both in the notebook provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid the liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages the mandatory and discourteous remarks. The public comments, portions of the meeting are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may either refer an issue to the superintendent, the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually beginning at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. So Board Secretary. Our action agenda items only, public comment is not open.
Good evening. First, I just want to say that it was great to hear a discussion about real educational, academic, and real items that affected our students. So.
Is your agenda item one?
Oh, I, I will be talking about Agenda Item 1.2. And so that was just a great presentation. But my questions on 1.2 is, which is the approval of goals for the 23, 24 school year. One of the three responsibilities that, for the board, that Gwen Thornton had presented in January is being visionaries and goal setters. And so this item, what goals the district is going to have for the next year is obviously important. As I look back at some past board meetings, I notice that the 21, 22, and 22, 23 goals were very similar to the goals that were presented tonight for adoption. And so I have some questions around that, I guess. In goal-setting, the acronym SMART is sometimes used as a framework for making goals specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, timed down. Sometimes people switch words around in that. But I think you have enough experience to have heard those things. So with that in mind, my questions are the following. How are these proposed goals different than the goals from the last year? If they're, if they were tweaked or whatever, you know, how, what happened there? Did the board and administration discuss these goals at a board meeting? Or you're going to talk about them tonight? Were alternative goals such as implementing a childhood center, hold a kindergarten, or something in the financial or operation, operational area? or something in the financial or operation, operational areas discussed as possible alternative goals? At the end of the year, what criteria will be used to define success and how will you monitor progress throughout the year? And finally, will there be updates at board meetings on what progress is being made on these goals so that we can see that there's actually action being taken on? Obviously, there's a lot of action being taken, given the prior presentation that was just amazing, but I am looking to have some more information about the goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other action agenda items only public comment? So our action agenda items only public comment is now closed. We move to our committee representative reports, understanding that there's limitations. I can answer to the summer reports, but Superintendent McLaughlin, therefore, I sped to those, yeah. If you can, please respond to Mr. Spence's questions. Be grateful to at this time.
Yes. So the goals were the same for 21, 22, and 22, 23 because they were officially approved in May of 2022. If I was back, I could have just pulled the M P year. So since it was only two months left at school, we carry them through for the next year. We are keeping with the themes of academics, social emotional learning, equity, and communication as our goals. We feel like we've just started growing and expanding our processes in those four areas. Obviously, not academics, we've been doing that a long time, but doing things with communication, doing things with equity. So the metrics are definitely different. For example, off the top of my head, I can tell you, academics, we were looking at making sure that all of our teachers were, had a professional development on U D M, understanding universal design of learning. And now, we're going to make sure that it's noted in evaluations and in lesson plans, that it's being utilized and that will show in the test results, all of those metrics and data warehouses that we just talked about that we've implemented over the years, utilizing that, seeing, you know, which classes, you know, how U D L is being used, processed to I M R S. So we're taking it to another level. So that's how we're doing that. And great question about reporting out. We will have a report out towards the end of the year on where we all have progress on the goals with the metrics that we're using at that time.
I have a follow-up with a restated question. I know we've talked about goals a little bit, and I heard said that they're not in any particular order, these are all equal goals. Is that, is that, is that a proper read for this or is there something for the order?
There is really no, there is, well, they have to be ordered because they can't all be come together in one goal. But so there is no higher emphasis placed on one goal than another. The district in each building, the district-wide, with the board's support, working on all four goals simultaneously throughout the entire year. Another question you asked, we suspect, I apologize, I forgot here. We did discuss the goals at the board retreat. We also had discussion with administrators and also with administrators. So all constituents were involved in the board meeting.
All right, thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. So our representative reports are next, and we'll start with our N C A report delivered by the President, Jim Dolan.
Good evening, board members, community members, colleagues. I always have some good news to share, and tonight's no different, but mine certainly can't compete with the news that was just shared after the date. So that's really something amazing to celebrate and a collaborative effort between, you know, a supportive Board of Education, our administrators, our staff, and obviously our students. Our students always make us proud. You can see them when they come up to the podium here, the things that they say, the viewpoints, and how eloquently they say it always do make us proud. So that always shows more than, and sometimes in my eyes, than test scores because that's the product that we see, but it's always good to see it represented in test scores as well. And it really is a team effort. So it's hard to compete with that one, but I do have something. August is here, as we know, it's always a busy and exciting time in Montgomery. You heard earlier about, you know, football teams practicing, the band and so on. We always have so much more going on. Just last Wednesday, I met with our new staff. We have our new staff academy that we have every year. It's a wonderful thing that we do here in Montgomery to get all of our staff members up and going and ready for their positions. I'm sure it's overwhelming hearing from so many different people over a week and having everything thrown at you from logins to policies and everything else you can imagine, but it's a really wonderful thing to get them going, get them ready for the beginning of the year. And I had the pleasure of meeting with all of them at a little luncheon as well to talk about what we do in the district and get a different perspective from the association as well. So we have a great crop of new staff and seasoned staff that we hired, so looking forward to seeing them and working with them throughout the year. Like I said, about 30, over 30 new hires, so we're very lucky to get all those new hires because as you heard, there's a little bit of a teacher shortage. So we're very lucky that we were able to fill those spots. So if people still want to come to Montgomery, we're very happy about that. If you look around our buildings and grounds and even this building itself, you'll see that our grounds, maintenance, and custodians have been very, very busy getting everything ready for September. They have very little time to get anything done because our buildings are in use pretty much 24/7 with all kinds of wonderful programs that we have going on during the summer. And then all of a sudden, as it gets to August, the custodians think they have a lot of time to get things going, but our teachers say, hey, can I come in and set up my room? So it's always a struggle because everyone wants to do their very best and have everything look their very best, and teachers want to get in and put up bulletin boards and everything else. So somehow, we make it work, but we have such a wonderful team and so much going on within our school district, somehow we get it done because we have an amazing team to do that. So I always want to recognize them, especially at this time, because it doesn't happen by accident. It happens through the hard work and sweat that we all put in here as well. Plus, you know, as some of us are aware, we've heard numerous upgrades, just maintenance that we have to do, and improvements around the district in addition to just the normal everyday maintenance that we do. And on top of it, you know, throw in full day kindergarten, so that's getting ready to go, as Mr. McLaughlin also mentioned. So a lot to be excited for this comes, this September as well. And like I said, it's all a matter of having a shared goal to get things ready and do the best we can for students here in Montgomery. Once we have that shared goal, everything else falls into place. One last thing, it was hot off the press, thanks to Stacy Anderson, who you've heard that name before because she does so much with our Try and Fast Grant. And you've heard about our Monty Summer Reads program where we help identify students within our district who could use a little help with getting a better variety of books, getting more books, just to help that little summer slide in some cases. So once we identify that, we make sure that we get people like Stacy and Stacy's little elves to deliver the books. And this year, I'm very happy to say that we've supported 114 students within our school district and given out, distributed 857 books to help our students here. So. Thank you to Stacy. I get to say it, she gets to do it. But it's nice to have a great, strong support network and have wonderful ideas. The architects for this, Stacy, always thinking of creative ways to reach students and reach all students as well. So it's a great way to end, so thank you for the time as always. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Victor Olin. So the next are our board members out of representative reports. Okay, here you go. I just have to remind all the board members to review our new organization meeting that took place in January. It lists all of the contact information, name, phone, email for any liaison and representative assignments that were sent via memo later in that line. So board committee reports. I think only the operations facility and finance committee has met for the month of August, so the second week in town, which is perfect for that.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam President. O F F met on Friday, August 18th. In attendance besides myself was Marty Carlson, Cookie Franco Herman, Zella Spence Waller, Mary McLaughlin, Jack Trent, Dave Blongo, Jim Dolan, and Michael Neil. Jim Dolan still half my presentation, so. Mr. O'Neil reviewed various projects occurring throughout the district during the summer. The E C C construction is going very well. Mr. O'Neil reported, staff can now be in the building. There's still a few other upgrades that will not affect the school. This past Monday, the fire alarm inspection was to take place. A new fire alarm installed and is connected to Orchard Hill. Fence, fencing is still yet to be put up around E C C building, and that's slated to begin August 31st. There's also some other small puzzle items that need to be completed. Mr. O'Neil estimated that the work is approximately 95% complete. Ms. McLaughlin pointed out that the enrollment figure for full day kindergarten is, as of Friday, was 167 students with target enrollment being 250. So parents, there is still, it's time to register your kids for full K kindergarten, full day kindergarten. As Mr. Dolan mentioned, there's a lot of upgrades and cleaning happening in the various buildings, including the high school. The other buildings were impacted. As Mr. Dolan stated, there are programs going on throughout the building, so that has impacted the scheduling, but the facilities have been working very hard to get those buildings ready. All the paving projects that have been talked about in previous meetings have been completed. There is still some pavement work to be done at the E C C due to condo being installed. The sidewalks haven't been repaired yet, but the plant beds will be cleaned up next week. We also had an update on various security projects. We're working on the card access improvement for the various buildings. The school will be transitioned to a new card system at the high school, and also security film has been completed. Vestibule and doorwork will soon be completed, hopefully by the end of October for all buildings. The, Ms. Administrator reported that we had a peoche visit. There was a complaint that the district needs to respond to. The district did reply to the complaint. However, it was reported that the information that we provided was not received, so that caused the visit. There were two small water spots in two of the rooms, and that was in Village, in Village. Those have been corrected. There was air quality test done, no issues were noted, and no mold was found by either the environmental company or the inspector that came out. Turned out that the odor was actually caused by someone's personal belongings. The district will be purchasing two new buses. We're looking at, total costs are about $320,000 for two buses. We also discussed about, talked about electric buses, but as of right now, since they're in the first generation, those buses cost around $800,000, is that per bus? So obviously, we will not be looking at that until those prices come anywhere there. Last item we talked about is the health, actually, health insurance. There were some issues. As you know, we switch healthcare providers, so there's some issues with Vintaguard, and some members believing that they were not receiving benefits that were equal to or better than the previous insurance coverage. We've actually found out that this was due mostly to weight loss drugs, which were covered in error by the prior insurance company. So that has been rectified. That's going to cost the district, it would have cost the district 190,000. We worked with our broker and got that figured down to 97,000. That wasn't my thing, sorry. We also talked about the food service program, and we also discussed the outstanding balances. Mr. Trent will be looking into that, and the committee will be working on a plan to collect those, to continue to collect those outstanding balances. And that's it. So we also discussed the agenda items, which are agenda items 3.1, the 3.12, which will be up for discussion. Any questions from the board?
Madam President, I actually was going to ask you if, and not that there's a huge update, but.
The board participation in the M C P A.
Yes, yes.
So I will announce in place of the officer's report this evening, I'm going to invite Board Member Spina to talk about the board's participation. And if you can just give a little bit of historical information for the public so they understand the transition from the development and implementation of the ad hoc committee with special services and power force with Board Member Spina Harris Todd, and Spence Wallace on the M C P A advisory. Thank you.
Yeah. So, well, because normally, that's a different point, but that's fine. So the history of this is that the, our special education parent group and both the M C P A, which is our P T A version of our special education, and M C P A, which is a state mandated parent group of students who require special services, to have regular meetings with district administrators to make sure that concerns are being discussed and that things are coming to, you know, progress. So we have several different, so we have the M C P A, which is the P T A group, and you have the M C P A, which is the state group, and then you've got this special education ad hoc committee that we had put together, and it was really a lot of redundancy. And so at one point, the M C P A and M C P A liaison was Dr. Spence Wallace, when she was a board member before becoming president. It then was Board Member Carlson's responsibility. However, you still had this ad hoc with Board Member Todd, Board Member Harris, myself and Board President. And so in order to sort of streamline all of that, what we did was we met with Mary Pat, who is our Director of Special Services, along with our C P A group. We've started, we've had our first meeting in early August, it was August 7th, that we had three representatives from the board join the M C P A group and join our Director of Special Services so that we could really begin to have better communication, understanding of what's going on, and we'll continue to, you know, be liaisons for that group and to help bridge the communication. Our next meeting is September 11th, and in between the August meeting and the September meeting, I can tell you that there has been a plethora of correspondence going back and forth between the board members, the parents, the district administration, and I think that we're on the right track to moving this group forward.
Any questions? All right, thank you, Board Member Spina. Moving along, our approval of the minutes, so it is recommended that the Board of Education approve our July 18th, 2023 executive session and business meeting minutes. So I will approve those at 4:10 at this time. So. Second. Thank you. Thank you. So what's our time? Try and call, please.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Spina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Ms. Willeka Dieringer.
Yes.
Dr. Spence Wallace.
Yes.
Thank you for your prayers.
So the Board of Education acknowledges the correspondence it's received as located on page 300 of the agenda. And at this time, the Board of Education opens its public comment for new business, new business items from the public to the board and the action agenda items only instructions being relevant. So the board secretary chair would do open a new business from the public.
Yes.
Comment at this time.
President, we're here to talk once again, as we always do, about lying, deception, and root of all evil, as it begins to your administration. I'm here tonight speaking as Jeff Grant, father, citizen, taxpayer. By July editorial calling for man of president's resignation, while the press demanded reference to the Central Jersey Conservative Union. to the Central Jersey Conservative Union, she knows C J C U policy that no member or speaker can act for the C J C U. I text her about it, she blocked me. Irrational truth doesn't mean much to her, I guess that's how it goes. But here's Jeff Grant. So, Madam President, the first indication of who you really are occurred about a year and a half ago. Censoring speakers at this podium from referring to people by their names. Montgomery Township Education Association Vice President had to be sentenced at a Mississauga lawsuit. This is a deception technique that detaches the responsible party from accountability. It conflicts directly with the First Amendment. I believe that you do not subscribe to our U S Constitution and intentionally attempted to deceive us of the root of evil. At my ask, it took our school board attorney to straighten you out. You would have done yourself a service by acknowledging your mistake and apologizing to the community. Your shameless silence sealed your deal. Madam President, you and your acolytes have rained over a shameless tenure resulting in our children's life opportunities getting crushed. We know crushing the kids eventually kills the country. The recent New Jersey Department of Education scores show our average at the fifty-nine percentile ranking. Hillsborough is at seventy-seven, Princeton's at seventy-six. Montgomery is getting its clock cleaned by Hillsborough and Princeton. Think about that. We're listed ten percentile points away from our town being yearly average. Think about that. You blame COVID and we were wrong. No, you and your acolytes failed. State test scores matter. They proved your failure. Shameless, our kids are not learning and your failed leadership is the cause. Now they will be passed over by the best colleges that Hillsborough, Princeton kids will be attending. You and your acolytes have adversely altered the life courses of our kids in so many ways that it cannot ever be meaningful accounting, meaningfully accounted. If you and your acolytes had any shame, you would apologize toward town right now, get up and walk out tonight and tend to your resignations and video thereafter. But none of you will because none of you have any shame and you have no shame because you have no honor. So we used to be and we should be in the nineties. So I ask you, Madam President, what New Jersey Department of Education scores would prompt you to realize that you have completely failed and for you and your acolytes to stop crushing our kids and finally resign? So what are those scores? Tell us what they are.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Dambie, I'm from Belmi. Um, so I'm here to follow up on an email that I sent to you on August first and then I followed up on August eighteenth. So the subject of the email was publicly posted countless images of Board President. They're damaging to town's reputation. So this was my email. I'm writing to you as a concerned township president. Recently, countless images of our Board President, Dr. Zelges Spence Wallace, have been circulating around the town. These pictures were posted on public social media platform without any privacy restrictions. People are cold and shocked and the highest ranking school district official who took the oath to represent our great school and township is stressed in this matter around kids. We have reputation to protect and we are becoming the laughingstock of neighborhood towns. I don't care what you do in your personal life, but the public officials, they called oath to act on the best interest of the community and their constitutions. Our students circulate these pictures and administrators see these pictures. This is the more, that more, that more realizing and harmful to our community and the school district. Please advise how this damage is going to be repaired and what repercussions the Board President will face to recklessly, recklessly hurting our community's image. So since I didn't get response from you, I'm not sure if you're going to respond, but, um, I just wanna say that I don't care who's doing what in their personal life, but when the kids see these images, the students of our school, they are distributed them and they are seeing them. And then you are representing us at South Africa conventions, uh, when the governor was here, you are our image, they're just representing us as a school. And I just don't think it's right. And I really don't care what you do in your personal life, but please, like, can we at least not post them so our students see them? That's all I'm gonna say. I don't have anything against anybody, I just wanna make sure that you understand that. Thank you.
I'm a thirty-year resident of Montgomery Township, twenty-plus year employee of Montgomery Township Schools, happily, thank you, and, um, a parent of three children who moved to Montgomery Schools. So first, I just wanna thank you to the members of our Board of Education for the personal time that you donate to serve our community in this important capacity. I work really hard for Montgomery too, but they pay me, so. Um, I really felt the need to speak tonight and this is the first time I have ever spoken at a board meeting in my thirty years in Montgomery, um, because I could not sit quietly while a few negative and vocal community members pretended to use a picture taken at a concert as an indictment of a Board of Education member's ability and right to serve. Many people dress specially for concerts without having to explain themselves nor tolerate judgment from members of their community. Like Dr. Wallace, I have had to balance my commitment to Montgomery Township School District and precious time with my children, but have never had to shoulder the kind of targeted, purposeful, and calculated attacks that Dr. Spence Wallace has endured. Encourage you, our board members, to ignore these irrelevant distractions and continue to focus on the task at hand, the betterment of our school district and the care and keeping of our students. Giving credence to this type of nonsense only serves to keep you from your important work. It appears at the helm of this supposed concern regarding a members' board choices are the same group of people who are afraid of L B G T Q plus community members, people with purple hair, and anyone who dares to be different, whether they be adults or children. In my role as one of the Montgomery Township School District counselors, I tell students that the Montgomery bubble, for all of its many strengths, is not a microcosm of the real world because there is such pressure, pressure on so many students and parents and families to maintain the status quo. I encourage and I will continue to encourage our students to color outside of the lines. Try something new as long as it is safe and know that there are ways and other ways of being and doing than just the Montgomery way. I support Dr. Zelges Spence Wallace and her continued hard work for our students, all of our students.
I'm a resident of Montgomery and I have two boys who go to Montgomery Schools.
Excuse me, we can't hear you.
Okay.
Talk into the mic.
All right, okay, is this better?
You say your name and...
Yes.
Did you say your name and address?
Yes, Rajinder Kultur and I live in...
Also? Thank you, I apologize.
My name is Rajinder Kultur, I live in Belmi and I have two boys who go to the Montgomery Schools. Uh, and thank you for your time presenting and showcasing Montgomery Schools in, uh, in light of schools making it better and giving a better learning experience for our students. I think that's, they are kind of chosen one way. Um, and I would like to highlight some of the things, I mean, again, it's nothing personal, I want to give you some constructive way of looking at data in a different way and why don't we do that, I think it's just gonna be back from my side. Uh, one of the, I think I have, uh, four pointers, one of the pointers which I want to highlight. Uh, we are looking at New Jersey metrics, I mean, wherein, I think we talked about LA and Mac and, uh, we're only talking about New Jersey, but when we have students graduate, they actually compete against national, other states as well. We don't compare this data against other states and what their minimums are and how they are doing with national averages. That's one point. Again, I think New Jersey itself, the, uh, proficiency went down, I heard from one of them, from seven forty-nine to seven forty-five. I don't know why it went down, but the reason for it, that would make more people there, right? The second point, uh, now, within New Jersey, we compare against average, but we don't look at the top twenty in the, or top ten, whatever, right? How are the other schools, top ten schools doing? It's like, we just compare it with average and we, I mean, we don't come to Montgomery to be average and to be better than average and feel good about it. I mean, uh, right? I mean, I'm just giving as my own personal view as a resident, why I moved to New Jersey, I mean, with Montgomery, is because of good schools and I was ready to pay extra property taxes. I mean, I, again, the way I look at this at work, I work hard, I get incentive, I get that translated into money, so everything, I, you know, effort should translate into results, outcome driven. Uh, from that perspective, I, you know, can you look at the performance of top property taxes within state and within nation and how are we comparing against that in different metrics and different data? And I'm sure there are a lot of room for improvement and we can start to learn things and how we can improve versus feeling better than, I'm better than nation, state average. Uh, again, uh, you know, I know it's, there's expenses increasing every year, but, I mean, I know how it operates. Again, I go back to my work, okay, I go back to work and everything that I do is incentive based, while if you have to increase the, uh, operational expenses or whatever, it has to be incentive based, based on the performance. Again, these are the four points that I wanted to highlight. Thank you.
My name is Sophia Robb, I'm from Skilman. Um, I apologize in advance that I'm not as articulate or composed as I could be as I, uh, felt compelled to speak tonight, although I was not planning to. Um, first and foremost, as a student of Montgomery and as a rising senior at Montgomery High School, I wanted to, uh, thank the Board of Education for their hard work and dedication, uh, that they, and the time that you all volunteered to make sure that I can receive a, uh, quality education and one that serves me later on in life. I also wanted to thank, um, certain leaders like Dr. Zelges Spence Wallace. Thank you so much for your shining leadership and example. I am proud, as a student of Montgomery, to say that you are a leader and I encourage that you are one of our leaders and that I am proud to say that you are our Board President and, um, I think that that's a great example for me as a young student who is passionate about advocating for, um, our students' rights and our students' needs and seeing that example of strong leadership is something that educates me outside of the classroom. So thank you. Um, I also wanted to say, uh, that I encourage the board strongly and heavily to focus on education because edu- we are the, you know, you are the Board of Education and that is the purpose and the point, not a political agenda, because that does not serve me as a student and that does not serve me when I go to college, that does not serve me on later in life. So I encourage strongly, I cannot encourage the board enough to focus on what helps me learn, focus on what helps me succeed and to focus on the important things and the important educational perspectives that can help me learn and nothing else will. Priority and making sure that the Board of Education has the right priorities is what is paramount to success for our students because your decisions, your choices directly impact my life because education is shown as a predictor for longevity of life. Education of women is predicted as, you know, in a factor in entire nations, entire countries, and that's things that we learn in school. So my education is important, my education matters and I, I ask you, beg you and encourage you to reflect that, that my education matters, so thank you.
Um, I just have a couple of questions. Um, maybe I missed it because I wasn't at the, uh, instruction for how we use the curriculum, but when I looked up the books for my student, I'm intrigued previously on the bottom, there was a star and I saw it, it said that that list was not a hard list, it was just something what it would be looking like or something similar to what they were using. So has there been any talk about actually posting what we're really gonna stick to solidly or is it just, uh, something for us to have an idea only and so it's gonna be used as resources to teach the kids about all different things? Also, we brought up in the past if there was any way that we can get a form rather than everybody making an individual request to be exempt of certain things. Has there been any talk about maybe, I know I filled out the forms recently for, where required to get on the Genesis and I'm very grateful and depression one was one of them that we had to authorize, so I'm hoping that working forward, maybe you guys are talking about having something like that that's just more clear so that we don't have to be talking about it here all the time? Just if you want it, it is and if you don't, then it's not. And also on the backside of that, have you guys considered having further conversations now that we see obviously kids are being exempt, maybe not all of them, but some are? So do we have a better plan than just pulling them out of the class in front of the other kids and just sticking them like in the front office somewhere until the, that lapse of time is over? Like, uh, moving forward since it's not a one-time thing, it's a continuous thing? So any, but I'm, we are posting, I appreciate, thank you.
So this is obviously not regarding the agenda topic. So I want to thank, um, the speakers earlier for the great presentation on the New Jersey G P A results. It's unfortunate that they don't have very much passion for what they believe in, but, you know, maybe they can get that sometime. Um, one of the things I really appreciated about the presentation was, um, a former CEO I worked for always said, "If you go to a presentation, the question is, so what?" You know, it's not just the numbers, that, that was useful information, but there was so much additional information at the end talking about what does it mean? What is the district doing to continue going in the right direction? What are the tools that the board has acquired that are already showing results? And so I thought that, um, it was just an outstanding presentation. I want to congratulate the, uh, administration and especially the teachers for, uh, the G P A results and the improvements. It's, I appreciate also the diligence of using data, uh, to look forward and seeing, I, and I look forward to seeing how, uh, STAR three sixty and, uh, Linkit are going to be used to actually produce better results and including in the N J S L A, uh, testing that was done. Uh, the superintendent has explained some of the reasons for some of the tests that might have been talked about earlier, uh, but I, I also know that the, uh, measures that you're putting in place to further improve, I think will definitely have results. Um, the speaker who was up, the two speakers before me, uh, may not have been very eloquent, but I think that she did a pretty good job, uh, and it didn't seem like she was really being crushed by too much. So, um, I think that the, uh, N J G P A results, uh, again, were just outstanding, being kind of like number one in the state, it's not a bad place to be, so thank you.
Hello, uh, my name is Marissa Muller and I'm a resident of Belmi and I have one child complete the, um, K through twelve here and one still in the system. Um, I wanted to comment to, uh, Montgomery High School principal's presentation, which I thought was excellent and, um, I found that these things also helped with my children. Uh, my son Jay, um, actually he was at the last meeting that I spoke at with me, um, uh, he got into every college that he applied. He got into every college that he applied to. He was not passed over in favor of Hillsborough or Princeton kids for Stevens Technical Institute, Seton Hall, Rutgers, Rider, NJID, Rowan, Montclair State, FDU, or TCNJ where I just dropped him off on his own. And that was all under leadership of Dr. Wallace, so I guess we did pretty well. And my child also has learning disabilities, both my children do. So, we have been tremendously helped by the support put in place where identified in kindergarten all the way up through graduation last year. And I do feel like the schools prepared him not just to take a test, but to actually function in life and in college and beyond. So, I thank them for that. All the teachers made a difference from Wilson to the regular teachers, to the counselors, everyone. And, um, I'd also like to say that I'm kind of lucky to be a business owner for the last five years and I employed a heck of a lot of teenagers from various school districts, including Hillsborough, Princeton, Hunterdon, um, and other, um, South Brunswick. And I'm proud of all of them and all the colleges that they got into. And I think that it is both unkind and small-minded to pit ourselves against our neighboring towns and I'm happy for their success and I'm happy for all of ours. Thank you.
Going back to the past, this will be a third meeting concerning books. So, we've come to the conclusion, or not conclusion, it's told that it's the teacher's discretion as to what is being read to the children. Since everything here is supposed to be on the up and up and we're supposed to have transparency and know what is actually being read to the kids, that's not a whole lot to ask for. So, I can tell you right now that inappropriate books are being read to the children and I dare for anybody on this board, anybody in this classroom, to tell me that it's not because you have stated you don't know what's in those books. I was told last month it's the teacher's discretion. Well, do you want to share my discretion or your discretion or her discretion? Because we don't even know what is actually being read. That is not a lot to ask for when I go to the curriculum and it tells me like books. Like what? These types? Because I know if any of you got a paycheck that says like, this is what like you might be getting, that wouldn't be acceptable. The union contract is not written like. Everything is black and white, clear definition. And for me to ask, "What is my child being read to? What are the lessons planned? What is actually going on?" Is not a lot to ask for. It's the bare minimum. So, let's look at the school reading. I was told that there's classics, blah, blah, blah. Okay, great, I take you for your word. My child comes home and says, "Hey, this is my reading for the summer. Here's the books I have to pick." Okay, let's, let's have a look. Six have to do with some type of LBGt, four have to do with race. Any classics in there? No. No. What are you going to tell me, I'm racist? I would love for somebody to come say that to me. Nothing? That's all we're doing? My kid, I'm, I'm paying to have my kid tutored because the school system failed him. So, I'm taking it on my own, shouldering it. I can't get, find out what my kid is being read to? This is the problem? Discretion? No, I want to know what exactly is being read to the children, what exactly is on the curriculum. That is not a lot to ask for, that is transparency. And if we can't have that, then we can't trust anything is being said here.
Hi, my name is Lisa Shaker from Bellmead. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I came to the meeting because, you know, you hear rumblings endlessly about things that are going on in the community and I have just two things to say. The only reason why I had any idea there was any kind of suggestion of impropriety on the behalf of any of the members of the school board was because a small, extremely vocal minority of people within the community who act as bullies have taken upon themselves to take personal, private information and spread it around town and politicize it. There's nothing proud about that, there's nothing impressive about that and quite honestly, good behavior is critical. Secondly, my kids both went through this system, for good, for bad, their friends are in every great university there is in this country, they had a great education, they enjoyed enormous emotional support within the school district for which I am eternally grateful. And I do not want to live in a town where book banning and hysteria and politicization takes over the school district. And I will happily knock on the door of every house in this town to explain to people who are very reticent voters, who never pay attention to the school district, that there are people in this town who are quite vocal, quite extreme bullies and whom I will happily stand against at any point in time and I'd like to offer my support to the Board. Thank you.
I also would like to thank you all for serving on the board for all the hours you volunteer and I was very impressed with the presentation. I had some kids who were here. That's the thing, I was given a dare to get up and say that the materials presented aren't inappropriate, so I'm going to say, "The books aren't inappropriate, dare accepted." Okay. In terms of, uh, Gads earlier mentioned of a photo that was passed around town, I have a couple of questions about that. First of all, I would say there's no reason this photo should be part of any business discussion at the Board of Ed meeting. The private lives and activities of all board members, all county committee members, anybody who serves in this town are of no current concern or consequence to the Board of Education, County Committee, or the public. Once again, a small group of disaffected residents have hijacked the meeting with another reprehensible attempt to harass, intimidate, and bully Dr. Spence-Wallace. I also find it very hard to believe that this has been passed around town and people are this upset, that the students see it. I think the students go to concerts, I think the students go to the Jersey Shore, I think they see people of all different matter of dress. The statement that it was a topless photo is categorically a lie, categorically. I've seen the photo, it's a lie. So, please don't believe that, okay? It's a lie. People on the Jersey Shore were less, okay? Justin? I think these kids go to the Jersey Shore. I think that this is really just another attempt by a tiny but vocal gang who have failed in their attempts, including tonight, to bully Dr. Spence-Wallace into resigning by repeatedly harassing her with terms such as racist against white people, communist, and unqualified have plunged to a new level. I strongly suspect, since this picture was taken not from any page of Dr. Spence-Wallace's, who is not on social media, but from her daughter's page, there's a group of people who are stalking her family and looking for these photos. The photo is up for twenty-four hours. You tell me, you think kids in this town care? You think kids in this town, her friends, her daughter's friends are going to graduate four years ago, you think they know who the president of the Board of Ed is? Most of the people in town don't know who the president of the Board of Ed is. I mean, seriously, they don't care. This is made up. This is, this is trying to be a problem inside. I urge the Board, the public, residents of the town to ignore this latest pathetic, mean-spirited, mean-spirited stunt. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. It seems, uh, many of us were moved to speak tonight without any preparation. My comment as well as in regard to what appears to be item number seven regarding a photograph that I haven't seen and Justin and I heard about. And while I really shouldn't speak on something that I haven't seen from the details that I gather, I'm rather proud to have the president of our Board be at a event, which sounds like she was with her children, um, at a beautiful artistic moment in the life of a woman, of a performer to whom many look up to, I'm so embarrassed, of a performer that many young people look up to, that she was celebrating the moment with her family in a safe space for women to be proud of themselves, proud of their joy, proud of their culture, proud of their body and proud of the many roles that mothers and professionals and human beings get to have in their lives. And I'm disgusted that this Board has to not only spend time on that, but also be put at risk in a situation where potentially an invasion of someone's privacy and ultimately a potentially revenge porn type of situation has been brought into our district into which it may have to defend itself if it doesn't act on this, defend itself if it does act on this. I want the whole thing to be over and I fully support Board President Wallace and I'm excited to see this photo and to cheer up. It sounds fun and awesome and I hope you had a great time.
Um, hi, I'm Abby Grayson, I'm in Bellmead. I want to echo everything that was just said before me. I think that if my kids saw whatever this photo may be, that they would probably think that you were the coolest Board President that I have ever seen. And I applaud a woman celebrating her body in whatever way that she feels is acceptable to her on her own terms without any input from a bunch of men and other people in town who feel the need to bring it up and prod it out in front of everyone as a way to publicly bully and shame her. It is reprehensible to the highest degree. And I feel like every time I come to one of these meetings, every time I feel the need to speak, I say the same thing. It is twenty-twenty-one, it is twenty-twenty-two, it is twenty-twenty-three. There is a very small minority of people who are going to be left behind by the world passing you by. There is a reason that the list of classics may not be front and center anymore because some of those classics, they are backwards, they are racist, they are all kinds of things that we don't want. So, absolutely, please print that list of what is being read to our children. I would heavily look at that list, pass it out and most people would agree that that's what we need in twenty-twenty-three is we need inclusivity, we need acceptance, we need not shaming women, not shaming people for their bodies, we need to be accepting and we need to recognize that we are in a new time and a new place, a new era and that you, all of you, these small, very, very, very small, but very, very, very loud minority of people do not speak for the citizens of Montgomery. So, that's all I want to say and, um, thank you to the Board.
Is there another community member?
Good evening. My name is Matt Rosenthal. I am from, live in Bellmead. I am a twenty-three-year resident of the town. I am a father of two graduates from Montgomery High School. I run a business here in town as well and I work in town. I came tonight to actually ask Superintendent if she knows the status of finding an advisor for a girls' flag football club, so hopefully that will get started next spring, as is the fastest-growing girls' sport in New Jersey and in the country. I'm wondering if she had heard from athletic AD Chris Grundy and Assistant Principal Scott Machuda, who had reached out to me in general and said that they may be looking for an advisor. However, tonight's meeting provides so much misinformation and ridiculousness that it simply can't go unchallenged. Since I have been attending the meetings in twenty-twenty-three, I've not heard one single constructive comment from a majority of speakers, public speakers here. I've heard arguments over lines on giraffes, I've heard a lot of history about South Africa, mostly scare tactics and require headlines for shock value, nothing which was productive to the school district. Mostly, I've been witness to a witch hunt against Ms. Spence-Wallace, which included calling her a white racist and now tonight, a non-believer of the Constitution. It's like an episode of TMZ tonight. Now we are attacking her for her choice of clothing at a public event because apparently it offends some people. And what does that have to do with being constructive to the Board of Education who is here to educate our children? The people who bring this up or are thinking about this picture, whatever it is, I haven't seen it at all and be ashamed and honestly embarrassed. You are the people and the reason that young girls feel self-conscious about themselves and their bodies. This is the best you can do to tear down an intelligent woman who leads our Board. You should be ashamed of yourselves.
Good evening. My name is Christine Witt. I'm from Rocky Hill. I am the mother of three children, two who graduated from Montgomery, one will be a senior. I was previously on the school board and sat in seats and it was a really hard job. And I did not seek a second term partly because I did not enjoy sitting here having people come and, you know, be rude to me. And I also left this, um, Board fully confident in our administration and our teachers and our staff. And I left here knowing that every student who comes to this district is getting an outstanding education. So, I want to thank you all and let you know that I wholeheartedly support you and thank you for your service.
And every community member submitting new business public comment at this time?
Hi, my name is Jermaine Mohammed. I live in Rocky Hill. I pretty much, I feel like it's all been said, but I just wanted to echo, I do not think it is appropriate to tell a woman what to wear and when to wear. And I am very impressed with the numbers that we have. And I have three kids that are going through the school system and I'm very happy with their progress so far. So, thank you.
I'm here, please, this public comment session is not closed. All right. The final item I want to adjoint to this evening is the action.
Can I answer a couple of questions?
Oh, I apologize, I forgot Superintendent, I thought there was-
There were several questions, so would you please respond? I was eager to. Would you please respond to any questions that you're able to answer at this time?
So, there was a question regarding books and Mubacca Atlas. I encourage, um, the community member to please reach out to the school principal with any questions and he or she will guide you on who to specifically speak to, which teacher, teachers come out August twenty-fifth, so when school starts to be having issues, please email the teacher. Any questions about accessing the Mubacca Atlas or the school principal? There was a question about knowing the books that your children are reading. There was a question about knowing the books that your children are reading. I also encourage you to email the teacher and/or then, if you don't get a response, please go to the building principal and have a discussion with them. And then the question about the Flag Football Advisor, it's going, I know it will be posted when school starts again, September 1st, and if a staff member expresses interest, Mr. Grundy will reach out to you. And I believe all the questions.
Can I ask just one follow-up about the Rubicon Atlas?
Yes.
When will the, or is it already up, the tutorial that is going to be linked to the website after the information session?
I don't want to speak. Is this forum still here?
I remember I asked you that question previously. She was attending the platform. I told you that that's.
Highway was already downloaded on the website.
Because that would be a good resource for that parent or anyone else, you know, since they were unable to attend the town hall, there's going to be, or is already, a detailed tutorial up for how to access. I think it goes up, yeah. Various different courses, how do you navigate that and then find the resources?
Yes, it's right on the headline, Town Hall, Working on Resources Presentation.
Any kind of follow-up or something to it?
Sure.
Somebody brought up, I don't know his name, but comparing, we compare our school to NJA averages. I thought you made an interesting point, since people do pay a lot of property taxes here, but comparing them to the top 20 schools and then comparable property tax school districts. Is that an analysis?
Yeah, thank you. I was going to comment on that more than a process, so thank you. And I think particularly in the past 10 years, there's been a resurgence, and it's been aggressive with the public charter schools. They operate with public funding that the local, we call it LDA, local education agencies or public school districts receive those monies from the state and then allocate according to the per pupil rate to whatever public charter schools are within that municipality. So because of that, that has changed the game, because these public charter schools go through and require an application process. So very similar to the private and parochial schools, these public charter schools, not all of them, but a significant percentage of them are able to handpick the students at their 10, their schools, you know, on average, well, actually slightly above average. So it used to be that it made sense, right, to compare apples to apples, right, the top achieving school districts with a similar demographic and all the other, you know, variables that the census calculates for municipality, you know, with their ranking. You know, so for example, you know, I think Montgomery, when the district factor grouping was in place, I think Montgomery was at the highest levels, which was I or J.
J.
And at J, so then we could compare our student standardized performance outcomes to all the other J, you know, factor grouping of the school districts. But the public charter schools, because of this application process and because they can handpick their students, and they typically, you know, select these higher achieving students, we need to also consider, you know, those comparisons as well. And just because I'm aware, I think it's Massachusetts, Connecticut, anyone, please help me, Superintendent McLaughlin.
New Jersey's number one, then Massachusetts, then Connecticut.
California, Jersey, Massachusetts.
But I'm not sure. And there's a fact. It typically goes back and forth with being ranked number one in terms of our students' performance with the test scores, typically third through 12 throughout the nation. So, but it would be interesting, and I think it would behoove us to discuss this in our Assessment Curriculum Instruction Committee and continue to elevate, right, our data analysis outside of the district and the state average. I'm open to it. I do believe it would be very helpful and a, you know, a viable resource for community members to be aware, right, and to hopefully, you know, garner some bragging points.
It sounds like you're saying that the charter schools have an unfair advantage this thing.
That's what you're saying, the charter schools have an unfair.
Yeah, it sounds like you're saying they get the handpicked and they have.
They do, yeah.
And that's fair enough, in which case I guess they'll be on average higher than us maybe, but I guess you want to compare yourself.
I agree.
So it's going to be an interesting comparison.
And also, the state now, in the past, just was, did you pass? Do you, are you on average with the state, or are you not on average with the state? We now have our growth percentile, so we have to compare ourselves to ourselves last year and the year before, which is better data than comparing ourselves to anyone else because it's intrinsic, it's the same students moving forward, it's very individualized, not this broad stroke of the cage, just all over the place. So that's been our focus. But to the board president's point, we always look at other school districts, see where we are based on, it's based on metrics you're looking at. If you're just looking at the state standardized test scores, if you're looking at NJGPA, we were number one last year, so there's no one else to look at, things like that. It's very complicated, the complex, the different readings. And finally, I know some other school districts throughout the country have even adopted that corporate model of, you know, incentive-based performance, but in the state of New Jersey, it's not an allowable practice for public educators.
So do any other board members have any other comment before the motion for the action agenda?
Are we still talking curriculum?
I know there are some questions that Mary you were answering too. I just wanted to follow up on that. You know, one thing that I know we learned last year as we were going through implementation of the health curriculum is parents requesting an opt-out option. I noticed that in other school districts, since we now have a pretty well-established curriculum for health, particularly in, well, in all the grades, but particularly in the younger ones, I know what the other school districts have been doing is just highlighting those areas, the topics that each grade is going to be learning and allowing parents to check off perhaps the topics they don't want their children to learn about just yet. And I think it would probably make it a lot easier on our principals, rather than getting bombarded with emails and notes from parents of excluding their kids from portions of the curriculum, if we could just build a form for them to kind of fill out the areas that they don't want their kids in. And then also to the question of the collection of books, I know this has been addressed, and we continue going back to the tool that's available to us. I actually went through it, and I have a question to ACI committee, if you could please provide me with the names of the books that are going to be utilized in our science department. So IPAL's Chemistry Biology, which books are going to be utilized in those courses? As well as, let me see what I have on there. As well as, you know, I just want to go back to the questions. We're saying we can't provide something to the community when it comes to list of books. We have a list of books, at least at a higher grade levels, maybe not at the lower grade levels, but there are, there should be a core list for our core subjects. Is there a reason we're working so hard not to provide that information to our community? Is that something that we could just do to obviously, you know, address the concern of a portion of the community, because we've had people come here almost every month requesting it? And I just, I guess I'm struggling why we can't, so I would like to hear the justification for that. That's it, policy curriculum. Thank you.
Can I also just, I'd like to put a counter out there to board member Jermaine Ginn's first request. I, as an educator, as someone who's been in the classroom as well as an administrator in a different role right now, I would really caution against having another form for parents to have to check off boxes and fill off. There's a lot of them. It takes me, for my three children that are in high school, lower middle, and village, a good, you know, hour and a half in order for them to get their schedules. So I do caution against having just checklist boxes, more and more of them, and especially with the numbers of, I don't think that, from what I have heard, and I've asked this question numerous times of Superintendent McLaughlin, is what the uptick was in any parents actually expressing concern for our health and PE curriculum? And there was not a significant uptick. There are very, very few parents across the district that have requested that their children be removed for any lessons, as far as I have been told, as I've been a board member who has asked that question of Superintendent many times, and these numbers are not high enough to warrant a blanket form as opposed to a face-to-face conversation between the parent and the principal of the school. I would want to know and have a sit-down conversation with any parent, if I was the principal of that school, I would not want them just checking off a blanket form. I want to make sure that their concerns were addressed, that I had a relationship with that person, and that, I think, is the right way to go about doing it, so I do disagree with you, board member Jermaine, on that.
Among the five schools for fiscal year '23, it was 1.7% of our total population, or 53 parents among the five schools that chose to opt out of the certain parts of the health curriculum.
So approximately five to six per school. I want our principals having those conversations with those parents. That's me personally. And.
And that's where the law is written. It says that parents that have blanket opt out of health PE, which is why we don't provide the form, what we can provide in Rubicon Atlas, they can look through it, write a letter to the principal, that has to be written by the parent, you can't give them a letter, it has to be them asking for their child to be opted out, and then the principal has a conversation with the parent and reviews the curriculum and discusses exactly what part of the lesson they want their child opted out from.
So the way they have to opt out, the way they have to opt out is going into Rubicon Atlas and doing something there?
Emailing the principal.
Well, the health and PE teacher sent out.
So how do they, how do they opt out? As I recall, part of the problem was the lack of clarity as to where the material would be, this is not an A, but where the material would be that they would want to opt out of. So how do those five people who are at school know when to opt out?
So that's not a new law at all. Parents have been opting out of health and PE for, since I can ever remember. That's like, nothing changed there. There's always been people who have opted out, who've never asked for a form, who never had difficulty having conversations with the principal as to what they did not want their children to say. So remember, we have Mr. Cory Belgato has taken on a new role, and he is more involved in health and PE teachers than we've had in the past, it's most in one K-12, and they're going to be sending out a letter for the first week of school, and it's going to outline, you know, who they are, what their plans are, and they're going to acknowledge that parents have the right to opt out, and that please, you know, write a letter to the school principal, and that will all be in their letter.
Well, just one more comment, since we're sharing our feelings. I have a A grader, and last year I had trouble with that, and my child wound up being in one of the classes, and also to the point that the parent came up, we really don't have a good plan of pulling those kids out, even if it's just five of them, they deserve a little bit of dignity. So I would ask us to just reassess it, have a conversation perhaps with the health department, and see if there's a better way for us to handle this situation, because like I said, people coming up and saying it's not working. So I appreciate the feedback and the statistics, but I'm just trying to listen to the community. Thank you.
Do you have a comment? Okay. I would like the four-hour filing motion for the evening, direct the board members to policy number 0169, board member use of electronic email. Part two, written letters, internet chat discussions, emails, or supporting documents regarding the school district's public business written by board members to other board members shall not replace deliberations that will prevent the public from witnessing in full detail all phases of the board's deliberations, policy formulation, and decision-making process in accordance with the intent of the Open Public Meetings Act. And as was iterated, review member orientation, and throughout my nearly three-year tenure on the board, this is just as a reminder to all of the board members, we're going to send the email communication. Let's be mindful, because no individual board member is permitted to issue a directive to any staff person within our district, and that includes the business administrator as well as the superintendent. And it's fine to be standing that the board president has not been carbon copied on emails that are being sent, and just as a friendly reminder to copy the board president on the emails that are being sent. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that? I hear none. I move at this time to approve the action agenda items, 1.1 to 4.1.
Second.
Before roll call, is there any further discussion on those action agenda items, 1.1 to 4.1?
Just a question once again on the curriculum approval. Is the curriculum approval 2022, 23 stating that only the courses that are highlighted below as new courses and major revision to courses is what we're voting on? Or are we voting on the holistic curriculum? The reason I'm asking that is because I requested those books for the science department for high school, and I just don't feel like it's complete if we're looking at the holistic curriculum. If it's just the items that we have listed here, then I'm good.
Just the revision?
I think it's just the revision.
Just the revision.
We vote on the full curriculum in January.
The year?
Yeah.
These are the revisions that are being made. Because remember, the curriculum review is ongoing. Any other questions or comments or discussion for the action agenda items? All right, hearing none, for Secretary Trent, roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Carson. Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Pena.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Ms. Belka Jermaine.
Yes.
Dr. Spence Wallace.
Yes.
Thank you all, Mr. Jerry.
Great. So we reached the conclusion of our Tuesday, August 22nd, 2023, Montgomery Township School District Board of Education Open Public Meetings. Thank you for your time and your thoughtfulness and your commentary. It is all taken under advisement. Thank you for joining us this evening. We appreciate your guidance and support. Enjoy the rest of your summer, everyone. And should there be no objections, I move that we adjourn this meeting.
No move.
On the favor of I, any opinions, any objections. I wish you a good night.